Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Good evening. This is our regular City of Clear Lake City Council meeting. Today is December 13th. It is 6:00 PM on the dot. Madam Clerk, would you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
And Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
Sergeant Hobbs, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dale Rogers, if you could please come to the podium for our invocation. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, my Father, we just thank you that you've sent all these folks to take care of our community. Father, I pray you would bless each one of them for their efforts and the new guy. Guide him, Father. Look after us the way you have. Thank you for bringing the water to fill our lake. Take care of our little community. We ask you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Folsom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, actually. I would like to move item number 19 to move after item number 15. We're expecting Chief Willie to be back for that item.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve of changes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones, any announcements for our closed session? Session?
There's no action for closed session. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody here wish to pull an item from the consent agenda, from the redevelopment successor agency?
No.
Anybody from the public wish to pull the item from the consent agenda? I'll bring them back for action.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. And now we will be doing presentations, and myself and Vice Mayor will come down. Come on, come over here.
Yeah. So, tonight, we're recognizing Bruno Sabatier's been a key component to our city for many years now. Councilmember from 2014 through 2018, Vice Mayor 2016 through 2017, and Mayor over the 2018 year. Bruno exemplifies what community involvement is, and serving your community as well as he did will be very, very hard to mirror by anybody. Just about every single event that you can imagine in the City of Clear Lake, he has some hand in, and we're sad to see him move on, but he's moving on to serve us at the county level, and for that, we are excited because we need assistance, obviously, throughout the county as well, so we can work together, and I look forward to working with you at the county level as well. So, thank you so much. And our city manager also has some words for you.
Nice words, please. Nice words.
Nice words. Well, I actually think that Councilmember Bruno Sabatier was an excellent council member and mayor. If you remember, he is one of the council members that hired me, so. High intelligence level. Bruno's been great to work with. We're really going to miss you as mayor on the council. I don't know of anybody who's been more involved, not only on the council and issues that we're working with, but just in the community, so want to tell the county that their gain is our loss, and we're really going to miss you. Thank you, Bruno.
Thank you very much. I may have a few words. I need to speak to my colleagues, but first off, I want to thank the community for giving me the opportunity to serve. This has been the best experience I've ever had in my life. Being on the sidelines is not something I enjoy, and I was at the table making decisions and helping our community, and I couldn't be more excited to have been given this opportunity. So, I can't thank you enough for your support and risking a new person to come on here and try to lead our community, and I hope I served you well. I want to go down the row if I can. I want to thank Joyce Overton. Joyce helped me start. I remember I started over at the college with an idea, and if it wasn't for Joyce Overton's help, that would not have helped me start in the community as I did, which was helped me create Power to the Youth, which eventually led to more events, which eventually led to me wanting to take more part in what's happening in our community. So, I can't thank you enough for your mentorship and for really helping me lead. Councilmember Bennett, you're one of the kindest, gentlest human beings I've ever met. When I first started coming through this door, you were one of the first people to open your arms completely to me and welcome me in a very honest way. And please don't change. I think that you lead by example with how it is that you behave for our community, and I can't thank you enough for making me feel at home and making me feel like I can be a part of this city, so thank you so much. Phil Harrison and I met through other means. My wife had his son in his class. We've worked within the community, and we've worked on the council, and I want to say that one of the very first things that we did together as mayor and vice mayor shows what it is that we can accomplish together, where we helped mediate for a business in our community to make sure that that business continued to be a business and not shut down their doors. And the time and the actions that you take, again, your example is a model of leadership that everyone should look at. You exemplified that just as well. So, thank you so much, and I value our friendship as well. Mr. Kramer? You and I come from different sides of life, and you and I have built a friendship by being able to sit on that dais, sit together at the lunch table, and be able to discuss our perspectives in the most amiable of ways, and being able to understand one another, and I've come to become very good friends with you, and I appreciate that friendship that we've created, and I also value the balance that you and I bring together to our conversations. And so, this is a balance that I think that I value in our council as a whole. It's not one way or another. It's the discussion and the way that we discuss things to be able to find the ways to solve the problems that we're facing in our city. And at this moment in time, I'm also looking at Mr. Sluton Dirk. I think that you're a perfect replacement to be placed on this council, as we will do shortly, and I think I'm leaving this council in really good hands, and I think that our community should be proud of who we have up on the dais. So, thank you so much, everybody. I honor and cherish these ears. And before I leave, one more presentation, and I believe Chief White will be doing his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's actually a good prompt to have, of things kind of falling over, because we actually have a lot of people here that we're going to be bringing on board. So, the first person I'd like to call up is Sergeant Tim Hobbs. He'll join me up here. So, I have a little bit of background. I know the council knows who Tim Hobbs is, but we have guests that are here today, and I'd like to thank the chief of Lakeport, Brad Rasmussen, for attending. Being a small community, being able to work together is essential. I met him during the fires, and we've been working together ever since, so it's nice to have him here. So, Tim Hobbs was born in Walnut Creek in 1981. He moved to Lake County while he was in elementary school. After he attended high school, he attended college for two years and then went to the Butte College Law Enforcement Academy. He started here at Clear Lake back in 2003. During his career, he served in a variety of assignments as police officer, detective, sergeant, and acting division commander. He's also served in numerous ancillary assignments, including as a training manager and as a field training officer responsible for training many of the members of the department. He enjoys spending time with his children, his girlfriend Alexis, and her daughter. During his time off, he likes spending time doing activities on the lake and hunting. So, joining him today will be Alexis to pin on his lieutenant's badge. So, in the interest of time, we're actually going to administer the oath of office all at once to everybody, so we're not here all night, not to diminish the experience. All right. So, we'll call up the other new employees. If you could please step up and stand next to Lieutenant Hobbs. All right. Thank you. So, Robert West was born in San Jose, California. His hobbies growing up were playing sports, mainly baseball, hunting, fishing, and riding his bike. He attended school in San Jose, where he graduated in 2001, and then moved to Fresno. He has experience riding bulls and participating in small-town rodeos. He also is a former member of the United States Army, where he served active duty. He completed his advanced individual training at Fort Lenterwood, Missouri. Upon completion, he was stationed at Fort Campbell with the 326th Engineer Battalion. He was deployed to Afghanistan in 2011, where he conducted route clearance patrols. He returned in 2012 from deployment and cleared active duty in 2014. Upon returning to Fresno, he joined the Army Reserve in 2014 and recently completed his commitment there. He has a seven-year-old daughter named Emily. He went to the Police Academy at Fresno City College. He started in June of this year, and I had the honor of going down there just a few weeks ago to join him for his graduation. He decided to become a police officer to serve his community, to protect the lives of citizens, and to make a better future for his daughter. And that's lovely, Mr. Dirk. Next up to his left is Garrett Copess, who will be a new code enforcement officer. Garrett was born and raised in Clear Lake Oaks, California. He recently graduated high school in 2017. His father is from, has been a firefighter for over 20 years and is currently captain of Lakeport Fire. We won't hold that against him. My dad's a retired fire chief. Garrett decided to follow in his father's footsteps, but instead of firefighters, he chose the good side of law enforcement. It actually says "good" sign on here, so I didn't. He chose his career path as a code enforcement officer because he will be able to make a visible and positive impact in the community that he was raised in. I had the opportunity to do the final interview in the hiring process, and we had a long conversation about code enforcement. We all know here how important that is to the city, and I was really impressed by his interest in the job, given his age, but his knowledge of the issues that we're facing and his commitment to make a difference and to go through all the advanced training and everything else it'll take to become a competent code enforcement officer. So, we're glad to have him join the team. All right. Next up, we have. Next up, we have Sabrina LaCoy. She was also born and raised in the county. As a result of that, she indicated that what happens in the community means a lot to her because this is her home. She chose this career path because she wanted to make a difference. She wanted to join this department under a new chief, so. Very good. I didn't write that. And she wants to join along for the ride as it grows in the best way, and she can, sorry, as it grows, is the best way to begin that chapter. And so, she joins us from Kelseyville Lumber, is where she currently works at, and will be coming to us as a new dispatcher. She's also had the opportunity to come into the agency, to sit along, see how everything works, and is very eager to get started. Last, but certainly not least, Charmaine Weldon, who many of you probably know because she's involved in all different kinds of things. I met her when I first started here. I was trying to place where she actually worked at because she's involved in so many different things. But she is a Lake County resident. She's a graduate of Lower Lake High School. She says she's married and has two amazing children. Her daughter is in her second year at UC Davis, and her son is a freshman at Lower Lake High School. She enjoys spending time with her family, giving back to her community as a volunteer at Clear Lake Animal Control, where she's volunteered her time over the past roughly two years or so. She is currently a member of the Clear Lake Rotary, and she coordinates the Lower Lake High School's grad night for the past five years. She loves animals. She was the, one of the driving forces behind the Bow Wow Lou Out, which was an amazing success, and I think setting the path forward for where we can be with animal control. So, congratulations, Charmaine. So, at this time, I'll call it for Garrett to pin the badge.
Calvary.
Yeah.
Mom and Dad.
All right. So, while they're doing this, I just want to give an update. I know how important getting staffing is. We have a lot of people here from the police department who are holding over on shifts. They're the ones that keep the wheels turning every day. I am pleased to announce that we are now one short of our authorized staffing levels for the police department for sworn staff. I just got word about an hour ago that we had a candidate just passed the psychological examination, so we actually will be at full staffing here within the next few weeks. So, that's exciting. We also have a testing process going on for sergeant, and that process will conclude sometime in January. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and administer the oath of office. So, raise up your right hand. You're going to repeat after me. I'll say aye, and then you'll state your name, and then you'll keep repeating. Aye.
Aye.
Robert West. Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
I'll also turn around briefly and just thank everybody who showed up to support these individuals. Family support is key. It is a very difficult job, and all the different elements that they're going in to serve, and having your family behind you makes all the difference. You're always welcome within our building. You're now our family, so come anytime and visit us. And the last thing for the council is tomorrow, I'll actually be swearing in another police officer down at the Fresno Police Academy, so we're going to be having a student who will be picked up towards the end of the academy will be graduating, so very exciting times. Thank you.
Welcome to the team, and congratulations, everyone. We're going to move on. We have a two brief, one brief item, and then we'll go on to another presentation. Business item number four, consideration of acceptance of the November 2018 election results. Resolution number 2018-54. Mr. Folsom.
Honorable Mayor and councilmember, the City of Clear Lake's 2018 general municipal election for two city council seats and city treasurer was held on November 6th. We consolidated our election with the county and authorized the registered voters, Diane Fridley, to administer the election and conduct the official canvas. The official canvas is attached to your staff report. For your information, there are currently 6,162 registered Clear Lake voters with 53.3 votes percentage of the votes cast, which is 3,286 on the November 6th election, which compared, compared to the 2016 election, there were 6,774 registered voters and a 60 percent, or 4,109 votes cast in the 2016 election. So, the canvas of votes for councilmember is as follows. Dirk C. Sluton, 1,847, or 40.5 percent. Russell Kramer at 1,624 votes, or 35.6 percent. And Russell Perdop with 1,070 votes, or 23.4 percent. There were no qualified candidates for city treasurer. By the municipal code, the city manager is automatically appointed as treasurer temporarily in the absence of a qualified candidate. The council will consider an official appointment at the January 10th meeting. The official canvas was completed on December 6th, and according to the elections code, the council must formally accept the results by resolution before seating the elected councilmembers Dirk C. Sluton and Russell Kramer. Additionally, because Mayor Sabatier will be stepping down from the council, Vice Mayor Harris will fulfill the mayoral duties for the remainder of the calendar year. So, at this point, it's appropriate for the council to adopt the resolution.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? All right. Let's bring them back for some action.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to adopt the resolution and accept the results? Resolution number 2018-54. I think that's good enough, huh?
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrison, a second by Councilmember Overton. Can we get a roll call for the resolution, please?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
And Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Awesome. Moving on to item number five, administration of oaths of office to newly elected councilmembers. And I'm sure that Madam Clerk will be doing this later.
I will handle this one.
I think that's your cue, Mr. Sluton.
Mr. Sluton. Set up your pen and attention. There will be a chief's presentation. All right. So, raise your right hand, and then I'll start. And after I say aye, you'll say your name. Aye.
Russell Kramer.
Dirk Sluton.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation?
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which?
The duty upon which?
I am about to enter.
About to enter.
Excellent. All right.
Yes, we're welcome. Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations. Not quite yet, because we're going to have to pack up. Don't worry. So, thank you for your time. So, we will go back to the presentation, and I will now step down and let Vice Mayor Harris take over.
So, I'd like to call up Officer West, and his, Jamin Merrell will be pinning his badge. We have a bit of a do-over here.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
He got it all nicely on there, sweetie?
That's my job still.
All right. We're back now, and I can have the city manager inform members if any changes to the second consent agenda for tonight?
No changes.
No changes.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. And even from the public, we're going to make a comment on the secondary aspect of our consent agenda tonight. Speaking done, I'll bring it back for action.
I want to comment. I want to pull item number 10.
All right. We have our newest councilmember, who would like to pull item number 10 to the consent agenda. And the city manager? Greg Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, this, here's my glasses. We currently have a contract with Milton Design Group for $94,920 to do design services on Highlands Park Improvement Project. This amendment is to include drainage design improvements to remove pollutants from stormwater runoff in accordance with state water resources control board requirements. That concludes my report.
Yeah. I wanted to pull it because I want to pay attention to that this is an item that, oh, we should have been included in the contract to start with, but it's an item that's there to my heart that we need to make sure that we follow the Clean Water Act, and we have these kind of bioswales or whatever the design is to be incorporated to keep our lake healthy.
And if I could just add on that, I want to, he already, I think, just left the building, but Alan Pyatt, our city engineer, this is his last day actually of work here. Alan was the one who was kind of bringing us into compliance with the Clean Water Act, and so we really appreciate everything that he's done to help us to do that, and we're going to miss Alan Pyatt's services, so thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
All right. With that, if there's any further comments on this, we're looking for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with Milton Design Group for additional $6,270, and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10 percent for additional 113 contract commitments.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we still need to do the consent. So, I'd like to make the motion that we accept items 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12 as presented.
I got a second, and can I get, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It looks like now we're, what was the last item there?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, that's right. So, we do have Sluton. We have Betty Pine, who would like to come up and speak, and we have three minutes for you to speak to us.
Hi, everybody. My name is Betty, and I live at Olympic Village Apartments, the city of New Orleans, and I've been there since January 2011, almost nine years. And on behalf of my fellow tenants, I wanted to read this statement, and I'm aware of the time limit.
over the weekend on a Friday, and it was towed Monday morning, and he lost that vehicle. It went, you know, it was gone, but it wasn't, he needed repairs, and often because of a fixed income, it takes us a few months to gather the funds to take care of our vehicles.
Thank you, dear, thanks for your time. Unfortunately, we're unable to respond to you here because it's an unagenda-edged item and it would be a wrong violation, but we very much appreciate your information.
Okay, and it's just the tip of the iceberg, there's much more.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else from the, from the community like to make a comment today? All right, seeing none, we're going to move forward to the public hearing considering development agreement with Justin Jones for commercial canvas operations ordinance number two one seven dash two oh one eight, and for this, I'll turn it over to City Manager Gray Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to introduce our community development director slash assistant city manager for this.
So, this is the development agreement of, I'm going to Michael's numbers now. Your council has approved seven, seven use permits, or seven use permits have been approved by the city council. We just recently had three more use permits approved by the planning commission, I apologize. I was actually expecting the city manager to give us a report something.
Sorry, we miscommunicated.
So, that's happened in November, and Mr. Jones has approved a permit to cultivate and do distribution for commercial canvas operations at Olympic Plaza. This is a development agreement that is consistent with the other development agreements that have been before your council and approved previously. Includes facility fee and five percent receipts fee as part of the agreement to offset impacts on the city service infrastructure. So, this is the first reading. Second reading would come back in January, approved by the council, and I'll try to address any questions in the council.
All right. Anybody upon the dais would like to speak on the side? All right, I'll turn it over to the public, or anybody from the public would like to speak on the side, it's going to be the time. And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Yeah, by motion, we'll have a first reading.
All right, so it's not an ordinance in the sense that it's going to go in the municipal code, but by law, a development agreement is treated like an ordinance, so you do have to do a first reading now. We'll bring it back at the next regular council meeting for the second reading and final adoption so that the council...
So, by motion? Yes, okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to move the council hold the first reading of ordinance number two one seven dash two oh one eight, read by title only, waive further reading and set second reading and adoption for January tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Would you like to read the title?
This is an uncodified ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake approving a development agreement with Justin Jones for property located at fourteen nine fifteen Olympic Drive units C slash D and E slash F.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer. A second. And a second by Councilmember Overton, and can I get a roll call vote? A roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Sluton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
And we will amend that ordinance, the second page of that ordinance for the second reading for whoever's the mayor at the time.
And then, item fourteen, public hearing considering development agreement with Stephen Malone for the commercial canvas operation ordinance number two one eight dash two oh one eight, and turning this over to, looks like, City Manager?
Actually, I'm going to toss this one back over to our assistant city manager slash community development director.
Vice Mayor Harris, members of the council, so similar to Mr. Jones's development agreement, the development agreement before you for Mr. Malone is for a commercial canvas combination operation also at Olympic Plaza, and the terms of this agreement are essentially identical to the one just approved, so I'll try to address any questions.
All right. Any member of the council would like to address this? Seeing none, I'm putting out to the community if anybody would like to speak for the community, and I see nothing, so I'm bringing it back for action.
Okay, now I get this down.
I was going to do it.
I'm going to make the motion that we hold the first reading and ordinance number two one eight dash two oh one eight, read by title only, waive further reading and set second reading and adoption for January tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Would you like to read the title?
This is an uncodified ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake approving a development agreement with Justin Jones for property located at fourteen nine fifteen Olympic Drive units C slash D and E slash F.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer. A second. And a second by Councilmember Overton, and can I get a roll call vote? A roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Sluton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
And we will amend that ordinance, the second page of that ordinance for the second reading for whoever's the mayor at the time.
And then, item fourteen, public hearing considering development agreement with Stephen Malone for the commercial canvas operation ordinance number two one eight dash two oh one eight, and turning this over to, looks like, City Manager?
Actually, I'm going to toss this one back over to our assistant city manager slash community development director.
Vice Mayor Harris, members of the council, so similar to Mr. Jones's development agreement, the development agreement before you for Mr. Malone is for a commercial canvas combination operation also at Olympic Plaza, and the terms of this agreement are essentially identical to the one just approved, so I'll try to address any questions.
All right. Any member of the council would like to address this? Seeing none, I'm putting out to the community if anybody would like to speak for the community, and I see nothing, so I'm bringing it back for action.
Okay, now I get this down.
I was going to do it.
I'm going to make the motion that we hold the first reading and ordinance number two one eight dash two oh one eight, read by title only, waive further reading and set second reading and adoption for January tenth, two thousand and nineteen. This is a note, uncodified ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake approving a development agreement with Stephen Malone for property located at fourteen nine fifteen Olympic Drive units A and B two.
And I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Councilmember Overton, and Overton, if I can get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Sluton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item, are we going to spottast or just move on to item nineteen right now?
Okay.
You wanted to switch items fifteen to nineteen, so we want to...
I want to bring nineteen up just so that we didn't hold Chiefs of Pain at here too long.
Perfect. So, moving up to item nineteen, amendment of contract with Foster Morrison to add the Lake County Fire Protection District to the Clearlake Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention. We, as you know, we had entered into a contract with Foster Morrison Consulting, they're working with us to do our hazard mitigation plan. We had received a grant from Cal OES for the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. Our original contract was for ninety-two thousand, but in the process of going through and identifying some of these hazards, in working with the Lake County Fire Protection Districts, they let us know that they were not included with the county's hazard mitigation plan. So, we would like to amend our contract to include them in our hazard mitigation plan. The amount of the change is six thousand seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
All right, and any member of the council, we have Councilmember Overton?
So, does that cost us?
We have a twenty-five percent match for the grant, but we're allowed to put as part of our matching in kind, so with this, any time that the fire department puts in, that will be in kind, any time that any of our staff puts in, that's in kind. So, we don't expect that there'll be, hopefully, none, but hopefully not a lot of money that will actually be putting forward, it'll mostly be staff time.
If I, Vice Mayor Harris, if I could add on to what City Manager Folsom said, the grant that we received from Cal OES and FEMA actually exceeded the contract for producing the plan for Foster Morrison, so even with this addition, it's still within the contract amount, and we will be able to include the fire districts in kind time spent on, you know, Chiefs of Pain have been included in the preparation of it anyway, we get to count that time as well, so we don't think it's going to add any additional out-of-pocket costs.
And I definitely think that should have been added in, so...
I did want to make sure to point out that the action that you see in the staff report also includes a budget amendment, so you will need to adopt that resolution. This wasn't originally budgeted, the budget was adopted by the council in June, and so the budget resolutions in your staff report include adding the entirety of the contract appropriation into the city budget.
Councilmember Kramer?
As I understand it, there's a hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant that's covering it all, so there's no out-of-pocket money to the city.
The hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant includes, we get to use that, that will, so with this contract, it would be just over ninety-eight thousand of real costs, and the in-kind contribution actually, I think, is, that funding will cover the cost of the contract. We have still a twenty-five percent match, but that's actually on the top of one hundred and twelve thousand, I think.
I believe we're on the hook for a quarter of the contracted cost, so of the ninety-something thousand, you know, twenty-five percent is us, but we can offset that with...
Hundred and twenty-five.
Right. And so, they would end up basically paying for it all.
Right, that was what I understood.
Right. Seeing none from our council, do I have anybody from the community who would like to speak? Chief Spada?
Thank you.
Please join us at podium, we look forward to visitation from you.
So, that's the fire protection district and the board that I serve, we appreciate that. I revised the twenty-eleven version of the local hazard mitigation plan for the county of Clearlake, and when we revised the newest version, we've insmolded a good portion of that, but there again, fire service was pretty much left out of that part of it. But the city of Clearlake, we have a lot of challenges, I think that our plan is more unique than the county as a whole, we have a lot of demographic challenges, we have floods, we have fires, and really ours is parallel with what the city does. Individually, we have a flood, or we have a small, what they refer to as a siege, which is a small tsunami and a failure of a hillside, or the debris flows, or the things we've challenged over my thirty-one years here, is that we really appreciate that because we're overarching, we're doing the same thing out there, and there are a lot of grants that are fire-specific that will benefit the city in that, so the new task force that the fire department and the city has embarked on, the vegetation abatement light project, we're all going to benefit that, so, you know, on behalf of our department, thank you so much, we really truly appreciate it, and I think it's going to be a good partnership as we continue down the road. And like you said, the in-kind matches all of our service hours, when we're on duty, those hours are applied to in-kind matches for those, or time zone on these projects, so basically, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate you doing.
Would anybody else from the public like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to amend the amendment of a contract with Folsom Morrison Consulting to add the Lake County Fire Protection District to the Clearlake Local Hazards Mitigation Plan.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Big Bennett, and if I can get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton, would that motion also include the adoption of the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution, yes, number two zero one eight dash five seven, amend the fiscal year two twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget.
Councilmember Bennett, do you second that amendment?
I continue this.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Sluton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Our next business item is the consideration of the two thousand and eighteen city photo contest entries. City Manager Gray Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to introduce our city clerk for this item.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, the second annual city photo contest was announced at the state of the city meeting, and photos were accepted through November thirtieth. Community members submitted photos in five categories: city parks, city events, city buildings, historical photos, and a miscellaneous category called free forms. Forty-seven entries were received, and yesterday, the marketing committee met to review all submissions and recommended five top finalists for the council to consider. Additionally, former Mayor Sabatier and Councilmember Overton are generously donating two hundred dollars of their personal funds as a prize to the winner. All entries have agreed by submitting photos that they may be used on the city's website and be on display at city buildings. While we received many beautiful photos of our community, here are the top five. This one is, is called Home for Our City. This one, oh, that's the next one. This one is called Chasing Bass, and, excuse me, each one has a number on the bottom, as you can see, so you can identify them under your personal favorites as we go along. So, this one is called Pumpkin Spice. This one is called Clearlake Fireworks. And the last is called Morning Moonlight. So, those are the five finalists. And Vice Mayor?
Can I run through those one more time?
Absolutely. So, we'd like to reach a consensus on the top, so we know who to give the award to.
All right, so we're just going to discuss it openly here? All right?
Five.
You got a kidney. So, we're behind there? We have?
Five, because, show of five, because it just really shows what, kind of like, the audience of what, you know, the spirit of clearly is.
Okay, so I'm one for five. Next?
I like three, five would be my second choice. I like three because it shows the launch ramps. I think bass fishing is really important to our, not only our community, but to our county as a whole. It is a beautiful picture of Mount Kanatai and the cloud formation along with the foliage in there, just three, just...
Mr. Kramer?
Four and three were my top two choices. Four, pretty much, I think Councilman Bennett said a lot on that. I like, I actually like four better, it also shows the mountains at night, and I just love the, I love the nighttime views of Mount Kanatai from our side of the lake. I just like that one. I just like that one. And it probably goes to what Oscars was, but it's beautiful. That's, that would be my top choice.
Mr. Slaton.
I like two. It says, it has the sun on the mountain, it stands out, plus it has the bass fishermen and a nice calm lake. It shows all different kinds of things with the city view of bass fishing, water ramp.
Well, I think they're all just pretty amazing photographs, but obviously some drone angles, you know, I'm a fan of drone stuff anyways, but my, my second choice would have put us all literally in 1-1-1-1. Luckily, my first choice was five. So, I'm with Choice Overton as five being my top spot. So, we do have two votes for five. If anybody else would like to think about what we could do there. Currently, we have five in the lead.
They're all fantastic.
Yeah, it'd be really hard to decide between these five pictures. They're all gorgeous, but, you know, what I like about five personally is that I think it adds a sort of magical element to our community, and I think a lot of times, we lose sight of the magical element that actually resides here. And I think that when you look at that picture, and if you know nothing else but that picture, it kind of transports you to the vision that we seek for our community, as opposed to the things in everyday life that we have to deal with. This just, in my, in my opinion, really highlights the beauty, the absolute just undeniable beauty of our community, and that's why I personally choose that one.
And that's exactly right. If we're going to use something, to me, this is a real serenity. It shows serenity here. You can still see that there's boating, you can still see Kanatai, but it gives you the beautiful ambiance of what's here. To me, it's different than other everything. I'm sorry, but we have, we have Kanatai, everything is visual in our things. This is still visual, but we're really setting off our city more, which is what I think we're, I'm looking for in a picture that where I want to set our city off into something beautiful.
It's our angle.
Right, and this is it. This, to me, is really makes our city look beautiful, you know, and that's what we want.
Do we all feel safe to be consensus on five?
Yeah.
All right, so it looks like we have direction.
So, morning moonlight was done by Peyton May, and they are actually live out of state, so I'll be contacting him and letting him know that he's won.
All right, fantastic.
And if I could just add, I'm really happy that we're doing these contests. This is something through, that we've developed through the marketing committee, and this is, you know, we've gotten such amazing pictures of Clear Lake. I mean, I don't think that people from the outside, this is helping for others to see our vision of what Clear Lake is and what it can be, so.
Totally agree. And I just want to say too, I very much appreciate the contribution made by Mr. Sabatier and Mrs. Overton for the winner. I think that's a fantastic thing to do. That incentivizes people to contribute to something like this, but I just, I really appreciate that effort.
And also, just to let everybody know, these pictures will be on our website. I'm not sure when we'll be getting them up, but they will be for everybody to see all of the pictures that were turned in for that. All of them will be up.
Yep.
So, we'll be on our photo gallery.
Yeah, they're missing a lot of amazing photos, so we'll be using a lot of.
We had a lot of photos that actually were turned in, but we didn't want to go through 30-something pictures here. That would be a problem.
We appreciate the reduction, and we do love the five, so it would be even more difficult.
It was, they were beautiful, and it was a hard decision.
So, next up is item 16, automated license plate recognition program. For this, we'll turn over to Chief One.
Oh, hell, you forgot that. You have public comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Bruno, good job.
Let me, let me go ahead and put the photo contest back on these, is it there for public comment? You may now make your way to the podium if you'd like to comment.
You public member, you. Please state your name.
Bruno Sabatier, Clear Lake resident. My, I love all the pictures. I think the pictures, obviously, we chose them because they were the best of the group, and it's fantastic. The photo contest is something that I hope we can continue doing. It gives us free access to wonderful pictures that we don't have the time necessarily to send staff out to collect. This is a great way to include the community. My only issue with your number one is it looks, and it's not an issue with the number one, but i-if we're going to aim at making that a priority picture to print, I don't know how it will print out. The lighting looks very blurry compared to something that has a little bit more light to it. That's my only issue that I have with that. I think it's a great picture because it does offer an ambiance that you don't necessarily often see. I love the dark clouds over the mountain as well. Would love seeing that. I'm just worried about the way that it prints out and the way that it's going to look with such the blur of the lighting, because it's hard to get good lighting, because it's not a real camera. It's almost like a camera phone when you're using a drone type of doing, so it doesn't take in the light very well. That's my only comment. Thank you.
What criteria is for the sky, so let's see.
There were criteria between three megabytes and nine megabytes, which this one fit that criteria, but I think what.
Just the blur of the light.
I think what his point was, the darkness of the photo, if I'm correct, along with the.
And the lighting blurs it out.
Of the lights in the photo.
Well, let's try.
I still like it.
I just like that it shows a whole different view of Clear Lake that we have never put out there, and I think this is the view that I would love to have our, not only our community, but the tourists also see, that this is something that they get to see at nighttime. We just never showed that part of Clear Lake. I think we need to show that.
I guess one other question, will this be a downloadable item? Can somebody purchase this picture, for example?
We don't sell, we couldn't, wouldn't be able to sell them.
Could I see the one that, I forget which number it was, the other one of Clear Lake perhaps wasn't.
One.
Not that one.
One.
That one. That one, Councilmember Slaton, you gotta get used to that. I like that one very much, too. And I think the shadows and the sun on Kanatai, and this one is a crisper picture of the photo.
It's going to be in the same dot pixel range, though, because it's also a drone photograph.
Right, it's all, it's going to be the same, so I say, let's go with the one with the five, and I still think it's something that we want to show that part of Clear Lake. No offense, all the other pictures show the water in the, in the piers and everything. We see that in Pretty Land Kanatai. We see that in just about every picture taken. I just think the night view is something we just have never had before.
Quick question. Didn't last year, we had people fill out, the public fill out on the State of the City, where people could vote on which one?
Um, yeah.
Are we going to do that, does it take in?
No. The way that this fell was after the State of the City, so.
Maybe, maybe next year, we can do that.
Yeah, we have to do that context earlier.
Yeah, we just have a lot going on, so can't do it all, but.
All right, I think we've got that one to rest. So, let's go ahead and move on to item 16, animated license plate recognition program, and that's going to be Chief One.
Thank you, members of the council and the public. I'm here today to talk to you about a proposed program within the police department regarding automated license plate recognition. By way of background, automated license plate recognition is a technology that allows the detection and reading of license plates and vehicle descriptions from video. They either occur typically from fixed locations within a city or from mobile locations within the city. The technology is capable of detecting and reading the license plate of the vehicle that passes by, the color, it can determine in most cases, the vehicle make and the vehicle model, which is all helpful information when you go to search. The vehicle is capable of telling us about stolen and wanted vehicles, so if a vehicle goes by and it's registered in the system, which we can get an automated dump daily from the state of all stolen vehicles, it allows us to be alerted when those pass by the location and can alert the officers and dispatch so that they could ideally intercept the vehicle, can give us information regarding wanted persons and also two missing persons, such as Amber alerts and the other colored alerts that we have for different special situations. It also provides investigative leads when we're looking into cases where a crime has already occurred, or maybe a vehicle that went past by, the location wasn't involved in a crime, but later becomes involved in one, that we can go ahead and use it to, to help the investigators to try to solve that crime. There's a study done in Mesa, Arizona, with the police department, where they implemented ALPR, and they found that after implementing the system, that they had three times as many hits on stolen vehicles, and they doubled their recoveries, which is a massive improvement. You're probably well aware from the study, or from the police department's annual report last year, our high rate of vehicle theft comparatively for our city size, which we're uniquely positioned in that there's not a whole lot of entrances and exits in and out of the city, so it's an ideal situation where you can deploy automated license plate recognition and make an impact on crime within the city. There was also a study done by IACP in analysis of data and found that 70% of all crimes involve some use of a motor vehicle. So, the motor vehicle may be the instrumentality of the crime, like they use it and are involved in, say, hit-run collision or something like that. It could be used as a getaway vehicle or traveling to or from the location to commit the crime. So, a lot of crimes have some relevance of a vehicle. The reason why we're here today is that California Civil Code 1798.90.55 requires that a public agency that intends to operate a automated license plate recognition system shall provide an opportunity for public comment at a regularly scheduled meeting, the governing body of the public agency, which would be you. So, that's why we're here today to talk about this. Our proposed implementation would be guided by Lexipol, which is the firm that we contract with to provide model policies within the police department. They're vetted throughout the United States, through attorneys, et cetera, experience in other agencies to come up with what they call best practices, and also to ensure that we comply with all state and federal laws and guidelines. This system would be restricted solely to law enforcement purposes, so when we're investigating crimes, that's the kind of situation where we use the system. Any operators of this system would have to complete department-approved training, where we would talk about protecting individuals' privacy, release of data, proper usage of the system, et cetera, before they would be allowed to access the system. There is a provision that would allow us to release the data to another local law enforcement agency if it was part of an investigation, and there's a tracking so that we know that that's being used appropriately and for law enforcement purposes. Because the data could contain confidential information, it would not be subject to public release, so it would be contained within the police department for the prescribed retention At this time, on behalf of any interested questions from the council, and then would request the open up for public comment for any questions from the public.
Councilmember Overton.
So, how does this, how well does this work for in that time vision?
So, what happens at nighttime is it switches to infrared mode, where it would be able to detect the plate, but detecting colors, because we don't have a lot of streetlights and such, it would be more difficult. So, the, I showed you kind of the best case scenario, during the daytime, you get a lot of data. At nighttime, it kind of goes down to the lowest common denominator, which is the detection of the license plate.
So, so this would show, they get the license plate, but does it show the vehicle itself or just the license?
It does. It captures a high-resolution picture of the vehicle.
And does that matter as far as speed wise?
It can easily do well beyond our speed limit, so over 100-some-on miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, Chief, I, I see on here, I'm a little confused, there's no cost, no financial implication at this time. What exactly are you asking for?
So, at this point in time, we're asking to comply with the civil code, which requires opportunity for public comment and council comment, so there's an opportunity, if you had any concerns, issues, the public has any concerns or issues, that we could respond to them, and then ultimately, we need your approval to move forward. Because we have limited staff and limited funding, I didn't think that it was best to go farther to determine exactly where we would locate these, et cetera. We've done preliminary looks, but the first step is to get your approval, and then that'll be handled next. I would anticipate with everything else going on, that we would come back probably around mid-year to discuss, once we have a chance to look at the budget, to discuss where we deploy these first. I would see it not as a shotgun approach to everywhere else, but we would do it in a controlled fashion, so we'd start at a location that's lower cost and then work our way up to the other locations.
So, what we're doing now is just getting our approval to consider it and, and then go out and get, put out an RFP, or that's basically what you want?
Yes, so it's your opportunity to hear from the public if there's any comments regarding it. You all can discuss it, and then the actual action item is to approve me moving forward with implementing such a system, but obviously, we'd have to come back for financial allocations to fund the project at a later date.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett.
A couple of points. Would this be used at a fixed location or eventually within patrol cars?
At this time, it would be a fixed location because of the way our cars are assigned out, it would, we'd get the most impact by having it at fixed locations. We had certainly researched about mobile, and there are some grant opportunities for mobile ALPR, but right now, it's fixed.
Okay, and you mentioned retention period. What is a retention period of, how many information played from this program?
So, Government Code 34090.6 requires a minimum of one-year retention for the data?
Thank you. And I would assume that this ties in with the Amber Alert System?
Yes, so the automated download that we get from the state on a daily basis would have that information in there, and then at any time, if, say, something happened right now, and the download doesn't happen until tonight, the dispatcher or authorized personnel could enter the license plate into the system for us to be alerted if it observed it.
And that would help, obviously, if you're in the middle of a circumstance locally, where you could enter, if you were given a partial, even a partial plate, you could enter the information and then be searching for that partial plate as we're going through these checkpoints.
Absolutely, yes, so you can get partial plate information, you can search by vehicle description. There's a lot of uses for that.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Slaton.
See, right, is, how do you, do you download this information? Because I saw it looks like it's on a fixed traffic signal or something, so you download this remotely or something like that?
Yes, so what would happen is it'd be linked, likely the initial location, which would be close to here, would be linked via microwave, so it'd come across there. Other locations would either be microwave or cellular, and essentially, what happens is you'd either process at the location or here, depending upon the deployment, and then eventually, the data would be stored here at the police department on a server, and that's how they would access it. And the officers would have access in the field from their computers in the cars.
But my understanding is, just to be clear on this, the, the algorithms that are built into the program are continuously looking for those particular series of numbers or the color combination or whatever, so they wouldn't necessarily require any manpower to monitor it person by person, or car by car going through.
Absolutely, so this kind of evolved out of, I was involved in a project over 10 years ago, where we deployed public safety cameras in the city, and what we found was, we'd have a lot of data, but it'd be very time-consuming to watch through that and find a vehicle of interest. So, in this case, and maybe to directly answer Councilmember Slaton's question, it's actually processing it in real time, so as the data's coming in, it's analyzing it, it's using machine analytics to figure out the vehicle description, color, et cetera, and then that information's instantaneously available. So, we get, obviously, the real-time alerts. Conversely, if we want to go back and say, hey, did this particular vehicle come through at a certain time, we can find that information out.
Thank you for providing the clarity, that's what I was wondering. Anybody else from the community like to comment on this particular item? If you can state your name and where you're from, sir.
We'll do that. John Leonard, City of Clear Lake. I think this would be a great tool for the police department. Sitting there trying to think of what objections someone might have, the only thing I can't even think of is a thing with privacy, of your license plates out in the open, it's not really a privacy thing, but with your driver's license number, it'd be a little different, but I think it's a great program. I'd sure like to see it.
Thank you so much. Anybody else from the community like to talk about this item? All right, we'll bring it back. And I do have one further question, just kind of thinking about all these different aspects of this. Is it linked in with DMV at all? So, if somebody has expired registration, would it identify expired registration?
We do not do that, and I would not recommend to move forward with that capability.
Okay. A little too complicated there. Okay, if I can get action on this item.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 2018-59, a resolution of the city council and city clerk, authorizing the chief of police to implement an automated license plate recognition.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Kramer, and if I can get a. And if I can get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Sluton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Item 17, Contract for Transportation Improvement Program Study. City Manager Greg Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So just for the benefit of the public, I'm going to go into not a great bit of detail, but a little bit of detail as to what impact fees are, development impact fees. Development impact fees are fees that are charged to a developer when they're building new commercial or residential developments. They are charged to offset the impact to the city infrastructure, whether that's streets or parks or police stations or city hall, or there's a number of different things that various municipalities will charge development impact fees for. And we're going to get into a bigger discussion about that a little bit later in here. The reason this is done is so that development basically pays its fair share of the impacts. What we've put together here is, we've gone out and we've gotten bids from various transportation consulting firms to create a, what's called a transportation impact program study. You require an under $8,000, $1,600 to do a next study to make sure that the costs that you charge for development impact fee truly represent the costs that are due to new development. So that's what this study would do. Some of the elements that this study is going to look at are the roundabout at Dam Road and Dam Road Extension, a potential roundabout, potential roundabout at Olympic Drive and Lake Shore Drive, extension of Airport Road to 18th Avenue, the Spruce Avenue Extension, Dam Road Extension, extension of Airport Road to 18th Avenue, capacity improvements to State Route SR 53 and 18th Avenue, consisting of installing an eastbound left turn lane, restriping the westbound shared left turn through lane through the left turn pocket, restriping the westbound right turn pocket to a shared through right turn lane, and installing the westbound right turn pocket. There may be some other things, but those are the main things that we identified in the, in the contract. The cost for that contract, for that study is $23,250 and we're recommending that the council approve the contract for that. In 2017, it was one of the council's objectives in our strategic plan that we implement a development impact fee program. And this is our, kind of our first step towards doing that. Now, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of municipalities include more than just streets. For us, that's kind of a critical thing because we want to get our streets in and those types of things. But you can have public facility impact fees on, as I mentioned, City Hall, because as, as the population increases, your need for city staff increases. So your need for city space to accommodate city staff increases. So that's something, something that a lot of municipalities include in their development fees. Again, as population increases, the demand on police services increases, so you need to hire more police officers, so you need more space for police officers. So the police department needs to increase. So you understand how that works. Same with parks. As you bring in more residences, you need more parks to service the residences. The city just, out of general fund, doesn't have money to put in new parks. The way you pay for new parks is by having development impact fees that pay for those parks. And then city stormwater collection, as was talked about before, that's now something that's really on our radar, so we're wanting to make sure that we have money to be able to address those types of things. So what we want to do here, in addition to approve, hopefully approving the contract for the street improvement fee study, we need some guidance from council as to, are there other things that you want us to address in the development impact fee program? Because it's kind of a, you know, double-edged sword here. You can put the development fee out there for new development, but are you disincentivizing people to come into our community and build new when we really do build and need, we need more housing, we need more commercial? So there's kind of a fine line as to what, which you can really put out there, so.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Overton.
So my opinion on this right now is that we hold off. I, I think you're absolutely correct with what you just said. We need to encourage people to come. When you start putting in the impact fees, it can get very expensive for people to build and then we deter that totally away from them. So I personally think that we're not hit the stage for that yet for, to be putting in these impact fees. I think the development, you know, agreements maybe are better for us at this point in time. They've been working well. And I think that if we start, you know, if we go through the studies, money will, and then I just don't feel that we're at the time to be doing that right now. For us, I think it would be too critical, is my opinion.
I can just address that a little bit.
Sure.
By doing the study, you're not locked into implementing those fees. In fact, if, think about what the study comes in at, you can decide not to implement the whole thing. You could say, well, that's too high, we're willing to go to this level. But you have to understand, once you forego, you can't go back. So any fees that you have not collected for development, you can't go back and collect. You can only do it going forward.
Mr. Sluton.
When I first came on the planning commission, I was asked if we had development impact fee, traffic impact fees, and yeah. So it's been one of my beliefs that I think we should have. I mean, and the reason for it is a developer wants to know exactly what it's going to cost. And if, once you have established an impact fee schedule, then they can decide whether they want to know. Now is, they, you have to have a development agreement to negotiate with that. But, you know, when a developer puts an option on property, he doesn't know, you know, he's not there to, to negotiate a development agreement. He's just starting out. So he needs to know, he needs to pencil in his, in his pro forma how he wants to...
The fees.
What the fees will be. Well, we charge, the fire department charges fees, the school district charges fees. It's just a part of doing business, I think. And obviously, we want to start off slow so we don't prohibit development, of course not.
So the study would be, actually, the study would be, we're just doing the study now and then it'll come back to us with their opinions on, and we'll look at whether we want to implement or how we want to implement?
Correct.
Councilmember Bennett.
It's, it's something that would be a check keep of our strategic plan to develop these fees. I think one thing, and I, the study I would hope would reflect this, is that we don't need to be greedy about the thing, so that we don't have to negotiate every time we develop. Then we have these fees. And if they're kept reasonable, that will attract businesses to our area. And the end game is to get the revenue from the businesses. The initial impact fees, yes, to take care of our roads and stuff like that. But I looked at the end plan, what is it going to benefit us? So I think it's within fiscal reasonability. The impact fees need to be studied and then we'll build it down the line.
Councilmember Kramer.
Hi, yes. And looking through the package of information on this, it seems the study would, would look at other cities of our size and similar needs. I think that this study, the study is something that we have to do. And as you say, we can, we don't want to drive, developers aren't falling over themselves right at the moment to develop in our city. So we have to be mindful of that. But this study I look at as a tool to help us to do that. So I, I like the idea of the study. Obviously, we'll take action later on how much, if any, of it or parts of it then we'll implement. So I'm in favor of going forward with it. Basically.
So I would say that having been a lifetime resident of Clear Lake, I've come to identify that one of the major factors that's been identified as a major contributor to some of the shortfalls we've had is not having these impact fees. We have literally placed ourselves in a position that we've kind of put the cart before the horse in many occasions. And now we are faced with an astronomical project of trying to go back and create solutions to the problems that we've created by not having fees such as this in place. Now, many of these developers that come into a community, they already anticipate paying some sort of an impact fee. That's just part of the program and they know that. I think that I would echo the sentiment of my Councilmember Sluton in stating that if we give them a firm criteria that they have to work from, they can understand very quickly and easily and almost more effectively develop a business plan to, to take action in our community by having that information upfront. So I think that, obviously, where we are right now is with this study, and I think the study's fantastic, it's going to bring us information, and every time we can obtain information, that's great. The next step is to move forward with the, the impact fees. And we don't have to make them unaffordable. We can definitely start somewhere, but we have to start somewhere. If we don't start taking action now, we're going to continue to have, we're essentially building a, our future of the city without any proper foundation to hold it. And we, we see what that effect has on the community right now and we need to be the changing force in that and allow that sort of behavior to continue to take place. So we have to really, you know, if we, the fact is, if we can't afford to, to incorporate impact fees in developments in our community, maybe we can't afford to have those developments in our community. That's my feeling on it. Anybody from the community like to comment on this particular item?
It's Tom Leonard from the City of Clear Lake. The impact fees are something we've needed for an exceptionally long period of time. It's been talked about before, we've had it in the drafts. To not do a study on it, to me, would be ridiculous, you know? And obviously, we don't want to drive business away. If people aren't prepared to help pay for the extra things they're going to need out of the city, we're going backwards. We need to progress, not stay where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the community like to speak on this item? Sir, you've already used up your time on previous items.
They've been used up over the last four years. Thank you for what you just said, Vice Mayor Harris, because it's very true that some of the issues that we're dealing with is due to the fact that we have not had development fees. And I think that the fear is real that we might push business away by having development fees, but the fear is also very real that if we don't, we're going to continue into the future with faults in what we're doing and taking action in, in our development. And so in order for us to secure the future that we want to hold, rather than let business control our future by not providing the impact fees, we absolutely need to do this study and we need to actually take a real good look at how to implement those impact fees so that they're going to work both for those who want to come here and develop and for us ensuring that the future of the city is going to be where we want it to be. There is always an impact when there's new housing, there's always an impact when there's new businesses, and we need to always make sure and take a look at that to, to ensure that we're not giving away the city and that we're actually growing the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Anybody else from the community like to talk about this item? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to council for, for the deliberation or action.
Vice Mayor Harris, could I chime in, add on to what City Manager Folsom said? So there's really two main things that we would like from the council. One is, if you want to include traffic infrastructure, you need to move forward with the contract before you would double change. So that's one piece of it. The other is direction to staff on sort of the scope of work on what else you want to include besides traffic. So City Manager mentioned, you know, you can include police facilities, you can include city hall, you can include parks, you can include storm drainage facilities, you can include any number of things that you would like. We just need some direction on how far you want to take that because the risk is just it takes more time and more money to do the study on all those things. So if there's something you think, you know, you don't want to include, we don't have to take the time and effort to study it.
Thank you very much for that information. Mrs. Overton.
I just have a question, some things, I'll wrap that up. So definitely stormwater is essential because that's a requirement that we're, you know, we've been, been on to us. So it would be nice to kind of, you know, everybody needs to be paying their share on that. So if we're going to do this, I say we definitely need to include that. And I realize this is more for the traffic, so I mean, the cost is going to go up the more we add, correct? So, I mean, I think right now, is the cost going to be more if we decide to do these later than to include it in this plan now?
Yeah, because, so the way it works, it works with development impact fees is they take the total, like, we'll just say dwelling units, okay? And you divide the total amount of impact and you spread that cost over those total number dwelling units. Well, so now if you wait till the future and you have less time and fewer dwelling units to spread that cost over, then the cost is higher for each of those dwelling units. Or if you want to say it like a, for retail or commercial, if you wait, 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 and we build a shopping center and you haven't put the fees in, it's too late, you can't go back.
Right. So, so, so the things that normally are parks are normally involved, drainage, though stormwater would have to be involved. I, I personally have never heard of the city and the fire, I mean, fire department, but I have never heard of the city and the police department being in that, but maybe I'm just saying I haven't heard of it. So I definitely believe the parks and the stormwater should definitely be in that because those are the two things that we, you know, are very community-oriented and anything that comes around here and builds is going to impact both of those. So, and I do agree about the city and the police, but I'm just not sure about how that fits into the study, just because I don't know, so.
We used to charge that in stock.
Councilmember Sluton.
Question, how would you implement this, you said stormwater fees? Wouldn't every new development have to take care of their own stormwater and if it affects things downstream, they have to fix that anyway?
Yeah, I didn't, Lakeport has a program. I haven't had a chance to review it to see if it's a development impact fee, but, so it could be that it's a project by project. We, we just threw that in there if you want to make sure that it's covered.
Is it updated?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kramer?
And what we can do is we can look at that and if it's not eligible, we won't include it.
Mr. Flora, you said what, you said there are other things, what the staff suggests? I'm thinking that the airport development looks to be, take up most of the things you're asking for with exception of the roundabout on Olympic and I guess Bruce. And I think the airport development is certainly the thing that we need to be ready to move forward on, and I think that's where impact development fees are going to be initially really imposed. So is there anything else with regard to potential development of the airport and both sides of the highway that, that staff thinks should be included in a study?
I don't mean, I think that's one of the main focuses we took in, where he was a transportation engineer to develop this go forward. We feel like it should cover it.
So this one we covered?
Yeah. Yeah, we feel like this, you know, we spent a lot of time on the transportation piece because we knew that was extremely important, right? And then we really want to move forward with that, but then, you know, I mean, I don't know how common it is, but I mean, some jurisdiction even include like the cost of police vehicles in this type of program. So I mean, you could really take it a long ways. It's just, we don't want to spend the time researching that and figuring out what that would be if it's, if it's something the council thinks is taking too far.
I would say in the case of this one, because we're trying to develop retail space, which is going to bring in sales staff revenue, which is going to go to the police department as well as rest of the city. And I'm not sure that that would be, that would be needed in this case. Certainly if we're developing something that didn't generate income, it might be different, like housing.
And also in the staff report, so we're planning on working with our current contract planner, Gary Price, on this, sort of the additional stuff, and he has a, he's put together a team that could pull this off. And so his estimate at this time is if we include not police vehicles, but city police facilities, our parks, stormwater collection, and our city administrative or other general government, we can potentially include like the senior center, those general government facilities, those four big categories, wouldn't expect the scope of work on that portion of the study to exceed $20,000. So that gives you kind of an idea.
I could certainly see the senior center being included in that. I could certainly see the senior center being included in that, it's an important facility and it's not complete the way it was envisioned at this point, the community center.
And then, I think it's mentioned in here, but based on the council's direction tonight, we would bring back, in a hurry, but with Mr. Price to start the work.
So, but this study is actually with W Trans, if not?
Right, we're, so we're asking for two things, approving the contract with W Trans and they're going to do the research and develop the cost estimates and all that and all the transportation improvements. Gary and his team would work on putting the other pieces together that the council wanted to include, the parks, if it was the senior center, stormwater, that type of thing.
So, it's going to come back to us if?
That portion of it would come back, yes. And of course, the transportation piece of the, actually the council deciding what fees they want to charge, that is all going to come back in one package at some point.
Right. So if you, if you want us to do more than the traffic, we're going to go forward with both studies, and, but we bring it all together, because what I don't want to do is, you know, approve X for the streets and then the other thing comes back and go, well, we just charged so much there, we can't do anything, well, why did we spend the money then? So we wanted to look at it as one package.
Councilmember Overton?
Okay, so can we include lighting districts? I mean, is that something?
That's different.
Okay, because that's what I was going to say, because that's like a really horrible thing we have, we all know that, so I was just wondering if there was a lighting thing?
Yeah, if, like, if we had a new development, we could require that they put in their own lighting district or something.
I just.
Councilmember Kramer?
You called now, I'm going to go with that. With regard to lighting then, new development, when you extend this street, is that going to, the lighting along the street going to be part of the extension of, say, airport to Eighteenth Avenue, et cetera? Is, would that be part of the city's infrastructure or would that be part of the developers' or does that going to show up in this study?
Yeah, I think that will be identified in the study, what's all included with the road improvement.
Okay.
The main thing that you try to do with impact fees is that you create a nexus of what, not what the project is all about, and what needs to be done in the project, whether it's street lights, storm drains, whatever, it's, whatever that traffic or residential development impacts outside of the boundary of the project, that's what you're trying to do with impact fees.
So, the other item that I would highly suggest including would be the storm drain issue. I would say that throughout our city, we have kind of a major issue with not effectively adding drainage in areas that was kind of pivotal at the time, so that would not be something that we'd want to incur a huge cost. Some areas, we have a substantial amount of rainfall and we need to be able to make sure that that water's getting out of the development into the lake where it's supposed to be in a way that's sanitary, so there's some substantial cost involved in that. And that would be another item that I think that in addition to the roads would be advantageous to have included in.
Yeah, so like an example I thought of is like, you can't pay to repair an existing, but if you needed to upgrade a storm drain because of this development, then that's what they're paid for.
Right, and which, which could very well happen, especially if you're taking a topography of land that is currently dirt and absorbing moisture, now making it paved area or roofed area, then you're going to collect a lot of water very quickly and want to make sure that's being shed correctly. So, I just think that from a development standpoint, that's the one of the other items that I would personally feel more comfortable with making sure that we're addressing along with railways is the storm drainage situation. I will open this up to the public for comment, and seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for further deliberation or action.
I approve the contract with W Trans for preparation of the transportation improvement study that exceeds $23,250 and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% of additional unforeseen contract amendments.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Kramer, and all in favor of?
He's supposed to say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries.
And then you want us to other direction on whether?
Yeah, so I've heard you want to include transportation, you want to include storm drainage, and you want to include parks, for sure. The other things that were kind of on the list that we put in there that didn't hear a lot of feedback on was police facilities and just general government facilities like City Hall, potentially the senior center.
My feeling on that, I kind of will echo Councilmember Kramer, is that what we're looking for in these upcoming developments is potentially some significant increase in our tax base, and that would be hugely advantageous for us in those, those areas. So I'm not really sure, unless I were to, we had an anticipation of a project coming up that we would be concerned about not providing us additional income and that would be impactful. I'm just, I hasten the idea of adding too much to, and that's my, and you know, there's a fine balance here and that's my concern. My concern is, yeah, we could, we could very conceivably add a cornucopia of items to it, but then we will most assuredly be declined, you know, taking up on that offer, so that's, that's my concern. I think that definitely addressing infrastructure issues are ma, that's our major concern and we can always go back and modify this later too, but we've got to hit the ground somewhere.
Okay, but this is a study, okay? So, the cost to add the city and the police department in the study to find out what the feasibility cost, you know, what, what the cost would be, would be minimal?
I would anticipate it wouldn't be all that much because you're just, you're going to be kind of estimating what's the cost to?
And that's all going to be, they're all going to kind of be broke down into separate categories, correct? So, I'm looking at, maybe we should go ahead and let them do it. We don't have to add it on, I mean, it's going to come back to us, for us to decide what we want to add and what we don't want to add, so it might be good to have the information for even future things, if we're going to do a study and it's not going to really cost us, you know, much more, you know, a few dollars more, we should have it in the study. We don't have to add it into our impact fees, as I said, we'll, we get to pick and choose what we want to add in.
But the question is, what, what is the impact from the study? Mr. Flora?
The cost.
What would be an additional cost that we'd be looking at?
I don't know what the additional cost would be, but what I do know is that our estimate at this point is to include all of those things that we talked about, including City Hall, police facilities, that is not anticipated to exceed $20,000.
Oh, okay.
Including?
You would be essentially, if you just went with storm drainage, traffic and cars, you would be presumably reducing that number somewhat, I don't know.
Okay, so.
My impression was?
Right, I have the same impression that this was, this was streets only and we are, we're, okay, it's not an à la carte deal, I'm saying, so, so I would, I would agree.
It can't be an à la carte, that's just what we want to know, but.
I would, I would say that, yeah, based off of what, the consensus I'm feeling is that we would move forward with a study on all aspects of it and then we would not necessarily move forward with the addition of those items that are brought back to us as?
Fees.
As fees because they may be too heavy of a fee at that point, that's my thing. Council, Councilmember Kramer?
So to be, again, I'm a little slow here, absolutely clear on this, the things you had shown on this study were, were streets. Now you're saying they also include police facilities?
So, but there's two things, so there is the, so if you look at the staff report, if you look at page two, you have the W Trans included there and you have the bullet points of all the streets. And so, that is the contract that the council just approved to move forward on determining the cost estimates and how that would all be allocated based on new development. And then, taking the next step into the overall capital improvement development impact program, that is what we're talking about now, which, to include city administrative or general governmental service facilities, city police facilities, parks and recreation facilities, city stormwater collection and conveyance facilities.
Not to exceed $20,000.
Not to exceed $20,000.
Right, a separate issue. So if the two were to include together, we're looking at 43, 30.
So, but, but also understand that what W Trans is doing is going to fold into this piece and it'll be one development impact fee program.
Right.
But you would still be able to choose at that time which ones you want included. I guess you could choose whether to put a fee on residential and commercial development or just commercial development or, you know, however you want to.
Yeah, and the studies will break it down that way too, between commercial and residential.
So $23,000 and whatever it is is the total cost for both?
No. Twenty-three thousand is for the transportation piece and additional $20,000 to include the whole program.
Anticipate, that's not a hard.
Yeah.
Forty-three, forty-three, two fifty. Okay, so, do we need a motion on this thing or are we just giving direction?
I think the direction to staff and like I said, based on this direction, we will amend our contract with Mr. Price and bring that back in January for your consideration.
Study, study. Thank you so much for your time on this item. Moving on to item 18, first reading ordinance to amend section six dash four of the Clearlake Municipal Code, sidewalk vendors, door-to-door sales, and amending section six dash one and six dash nine of the Clearlake Municipal Code regulating internet businesses. And City Manager?
I believe we'll have Chief White with us.
White?
Thank you. We're back again on this item, we, if you'll recall, we talked about this previously and we expect to come back with a second reading. However, in doing some more research, we found that there were some other changes that need to be made, so in the interest of not kicking the can down the road, we have brought those changes back. So specifically, what we've done is, we made a few changes on the actual sidewalk vendor regulations to clear up some language, particularly regarding the fingerprinting requirement and a few other things. We also took care of, our city's municipal code has numerous references where we've adopted county codes by reference when the city was formed. The challenge is those codes refer to things that either have changed since they were originally adopted or refer to like the sheriff, et cetera. So what we've done is taken the language from the county that was adopted by reference regarding the, the door-to-door sales, itinerant vendors, and brought them actually into our code, and then now we can make changes based upon our local needs and not have to comply with changes that occur at the county level. So with that, I can answer any questions that you have about the specific item, but it's pretty much consistent with what we talked about last time, just a few changes that are notated in the report.
All right. Anybody at council would like to speak on this item? I see nothing. Anybody from the public would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing nothing, I'm bringing you back to the council for action or for deliberation.
I'd like to.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We got some feedback that there might be concern regarding city events or special events, and we have a proposed kind of last minute change that we could do on the definition of sidewalk vendor, that would allow that if the council would be so inclined for that change. What we would recommend, if that's your interest, is to add on to the definition of sidewalk vendor, the sentence, "This does not include an authorized vendor during a city event" or a special event where a special event permit has been issued.
Definitely.
Right, whoever's making that motion, if anything with that?
Hold up for reading ordinance number two-one-six dash two-zero-one-eight and ordinance in section six dash four of the Clearlake Municipal Code regarding sidewalk vendors. Right here is where we want to add what you said, is that correct?
You can just, yeah, you can just.
As stated by our chief, and door-to-door sales activities in amendment sections six dash one and six dash nine of the Clearlake Municipal Code regarding internet or, antenorate businesses, free of by title only, is that second reading for the January tenth, 2019 meeting?
Second.
I got a motion and a second by Councilmember Bennett, and if I can get a, was that a roll call vote on this item?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Slaton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Moving on to item number 20, consideration of a fourth amendment to the employment services agreement with City Manager Greg Folsom.
I'll, I'll take that, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. So, apparently you guys think that Mr. Folsom's doing a job and that appropriate correspondence for that would be to do a, do a rate increase for him. So, what we have drafted here, Mr. Folsom, has been here since June 2015, has been several amendments that have taken place in his contract, and what I drafted here is an additional, it would be a fourth amendment to his contract which would change his monthly rate of unemployment to $12,610.62. That is a five percent increase retroactive December first, 2018, 2018, and we have to, had to specifically mention those numbers, it's a new state law that requires the department head changes in salaries to be mentioned for an open session during the regular change. So if the council is comfortable with those changes, we can, can entertain a motion at this point.
All right. Any comments here at council? Seeing none, bring it to the public for comment. Seeing none, bring it back to the council for action. Thank you, I think that's great.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution to the city council, the city of Clear Lake, amending fiscal.
No, no.
Get the right picture. Yeah, we thought we had.
I guess can't get through it.
Okay, it's just a motion then to approve the fourth amendment to the employment services agreement for City Manager Greg Folsom.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Councilmember Overton, and can I get a roll call vote on this item?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Slaton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I guess proud.
Right, and moving on to the next item here, appointment of the 2019 mayor and vice mayor. All right.
This is just up to you guys.
All right, so, I guess we'll discuss this amongst ourselves. So what I'll be looking for is a nomination for the position of mayor, and.
As a, as a junior council member, I want to make the nomination of Nick Bennett as mayor and Councilmember Kramer as vice mayor.
All right, and I will second that motion for Nick Bennett as mayor and Councilmember Kramer as vice mayor.
And all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, City Manager and Councilmember report. We will start with? City Manager.
Thank you. Not sure what to call it right now. Phil, Phil, Councilmember Harris. I, I'm just going to keep it brief, I just want to thank council and thank staff for a great year, I think we got a lot accomplished this year and we're real proud of everything that we've done. I think we've really made a difference in the way that Clear Lake's going and the way that Clear Lake's being perceived throughout the county, and that's thanks to the great direction of staff, great direction of the council, and the great implementation by all the staff from PD, Public Works, Administrative Services, I'm very pleased with my new hires sitting over there, so, again, thanks to all those folks. I want to throw a shout out to the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, if you drive out Lake Shore Drive this year, much different than in years past, it's been one of my pet peeves, that there just isn't enough lights for Christmas around here. This year, the chamber took that challenge and they've put that challenge on to the businesses and businesses have gotten on board, I think to a really good degree, and there's lights out there and I'm very proud of what's happening in Clear Lake along Lake Shore Drive. I want to thank the police department for putting on in the last two weeks, they've done their coffee with the cop, they're doing a lot of interaction with the public, they also did the shop with the cop, so they're getting a lot of, doing a lot of great things with the community. One, just one more time, say thank you to Alan Pyatt for his assistance, he's been here for six months, he's a, what's called a 960 retired employee, so he couldn't stay on any longer, but we really appreciate him. And then one last, thank you to Bruno Sabatier for all the assistance and great leadership that he's shown to the city of Clear Lake. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much for that. Councilmember Slaton?
I really don't have any.
That's all right, that's all right, we still got to ask. That's all right, that's all right, we still got to ask you. And Counselor member Kramer?
Well, I, I also would like to thank former mayor Sabatier for all of the, the help that he's given me in the last seven months, and I think we have, as you stated in your remarks earlier, we've not only become colleagues on the council, but we became friends, and I appreciate and value that. So thank you, Bruno, for that. I've got to talk about some other things, but I really don't see a need to talk about area planning or any of those things. I'll, I'll just close with that.
Counselor member...
So, and to add to our police department, they are so awesome lately, I'm so proud of our police department, is that they came down to the senior center, brought the VIP group there, we were very happy to have them. They did a great presentation there. My seniors seemed like very interested, it took a lot of the flyers, so I really hope that that works out to be some more volunteers for our police department. And I think maybe some of the things that they pointed out that I, even I had questions asked me about was, you don't have to have a driver's license, if you can't drive, they will hook you up with somebody or put you into a position in the office that you don't have to drive, because some of our seniors just don't drive, you know? And then the Yada program where they can make phone calls, come in and just make phone calls to the other people who are homebound and just need somebody to talk to. So, you know, I think that was a real good clarity, something that they clarified at the, at their meeting, and I appreciate that. Also, we have a wonderful Thanksgiving dinner, and we are going to do Christmas Day dinner, also at the senior center, since the senior center basically semi-closed is what we call it, that I'm going to go ahead and open up for Christmas Day. So anybody that wants to come down, it's open to the public, you're by yourself, or want to bring your families, or want to come down and volunteer, I'm taking it all, and we'll have a good time, play some music and have fun. I also want to thank, you know, Craig, obviously done a wonderful job in helping, you know, bringing Alan and our new chief on, Andrew, it's been wonderful. You know, the attitude of our city always stems from the top, always blame council before, when we have bad attitudes. So now I'm going to congratulate council, because it seems like we have made that step over, and everything is positive in our city, and that's what I've been looking for for the past fifteen years that I've sat here. And so it's been a great pleasure to sit with, with the past councils over the last, you know, six years, I'm going to say it's been really great council, moving the city forward. So I want to pat all of us on the back for that, most of all for hiring the right people to, in the places that we needed it, and I think this time we, we did it right, guys. So glad that I stuck with it and stayed here to see it moving forward, it was a, it was almost just like never going to leave until I say that happens, so I'm really happy to see it happen. Bruno, all this time you keep saying you're, you're leaving, but I just told him, I said, quit saying that, because you're not leaving us, he's just moving up into a different position that I hope that we will continue working hard. I have watched you grow from just this college kid, and I'm very proud to see what you have done, and how far you've come, and that you're going to move forward, and I have no doubt you're going to be just the most awesome supervisor we have ever had. So I look forward to working with you in that capacity. So thank you all very much, my council members, for putting up with me, and hopefully you can put up with me for a few more years, and have a Merry Christmas to everybody.
Counselor member Bennett?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank my fellow council members for this really big honor. We are blessed as a community. We have definitely a great community out there, but we have great staff leading our community now, from a city manager, to finance, to public work, to the police department, city clerk who keeps us all in line, cracking the whip now and then, and I'm talking down to the patrolman, dispatcher, the public works, people who are out there cleaning up the sewers, the drains, storm drains, in when the rain comes. Bruno, you've set a high mark. I will try to reach it, I don't know that I can go past it, but you have done a great job, and while I was still active with the police department, Bruno would come in often, quite often, for right long, and that's where we began our communication between each other. We may not always agree, but we always ask the council. We may not always agree, but generally, we reach a consensus. I want to thank our legal counsel, there is advice to me at times, and to the council and the city as a whole. We are really blessed with what we have here. I can recall when I was still with the police department, having to get, get by the back door there in case a fight broke out up here on the dais.
Where you would have been.
And what a, what a difference. It's called working together for the betterment of our community. There are others that have sat up here in the past, Chuck Leonard is a council person, Judy Thing, people throughout the community that have made this city what it is, and now we need to take this step and move forward, and make it seem greater. So thank you very much.
And Counselor member Kramer would like to read it?
No. Alan, one of the, one of the drawbacks to going first. My other, the two council members that have spoken are, were far more eloquent than me, and reminded me that I do need to thank not only former mayor Sabatier, but also Mr. Paulson, Mr. Jones. Chief White, you've been amazing. You've, you've accomplished so much in the few months that you've been here. Mr. Flora, I really enjoy our conversations, and I think between you and Chief White, we're, we're coming into the 21st century, and I do, I really look forward to the good things that are happening, and, and, this Swanson, I have, you keep me out of trouble last year, and I can't say how much I appreciate that, so forgive me for, for getting to say all those things to begin with, but I, I do feel very, very much for all of you, so, thank you.
All right, and I have been sort of busy with the different things going on. Community Christmas dinner thing was a brief stay, I had toys for thoughts the same day, so that was a drive we were part of, it was fantastic. CC4C, Kleenex, I was part of, and then we did participate, our business with Lakeshore Drive decoration thing, we're not in the competition thing, but I think you're, you're right in saying that everybody really has, has come out for that. The Christmas parade with Bruno, got to participate in that, and then meeting with a concerned citizen. I want to say how much I appreciated working with Bruno over the last year, serving as vice mayor has been a fun experience, serving alongside Bruno was a really a great team approach, and I really appreciated the time I got to spend with you, learned a lot from your, your ways, you're really perfect for this kind of a position, you really are. You speak to the people, and you allow to the, the people to speak through you here on the dais, and I appreciate all your efforts. Again, I'll reiterate the, the feeling about everybody working together in our city, obviously the participation we're seeing from the citizens in our city is a direct result of all the participation that's taking place at the city level, and I think that it's, it's a reverberation of the things that are taking place here, and you're starting to see people care more, and be more concerned, and it's visual, you know? So that's, that's fantastic to see that stuff taking place. Congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor, really happy to see the two of you in those positions, and I think that going into 2019, we're going to have a great year, continuing on with our pathways of success, and I thank you all so much for coming out tonight, and any future agenda items, Scott?
Committee, right now.
All right.
Committee, this time?
Oh, yeah, the, are we getting that?
Yeah, January eighth, I believe. All right, and that was the conclusion. Thank you so much.